We call the meeting to order. We're going to start with a prayer. Steve Ayersman, Light, Crime and Connect Church.
That's right. Lord, I thank you all for tonight, and Lord, we just pray that you continue to work in our hearts and our minds. Lord, I pray for the men and women that serve our village. Lord, we just thank you for them. And Lord, we do pray for this time in our country as we have our big election here tomorrow. And Lord, I pray for our president now. I pray for our president in the future. I pray for our Congress now and our Congress in the future. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance to move our country forward. And Lord, I do pray, and I ask that you would help us come together as a great country that we are. Lord, we just thank you, and we praise you. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We need to amend the agenda, the changes that you have, so entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, remember?
Second. Roll call. Okay, we can do roll call.
We can do it out of order.
We can do this first.
Yeah.
Okay, I got a second.
What are we changing? This one we're changing and this?
Yes. We're adding that ordinance and the public hearing. I didn't have printed on there.
I got a first and second to do with the roll call on this.
Bassett?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Barth?
Yep.
Okay, we can do the roll call on the meeting.
Okay. Ridgeway?
Present.
Beverly?
Present.
Juan?
Present.
Bassett?
Here.
Barth?
Here.
And Klepper is six, so he won't be here tonight.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the last meeting we had on October the 19th. Any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
A second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Have before you the approval of the bills. Any questions?
Because it's only the second of the month.
Okay, any?
Surprisingly, I don't have any questions, so I move with Pam.
A second.
A second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a public hearing on the zoning change, Old Mill Road Lots from commercial to residential. So Troy, what does that?
At the next meeting, I'll bring the ordinance to vote on as far as then. This is the public hearing where somebody wanted to come express who was the steward or whatever.
Okay, any comments on this?
Well, I think it's great we can have some additional housing offered.
Any other comments? Okay, so the next meeting, you'll bring the first reading back. And there'll be three readings on it?
Yeah, I think I have to look at it. I think it has to be passed.
Okay.
It's a time frame where like it's within 30 days or something of the last meeting, so we'll have to.
Good hands, I see.
He's been disbarred.
Okay, no other questions, we'll move on. Mike Brown from the American Legion.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me a few minutes. Most of you know who I am, Mike Brown. I'm the commander of the American Legion this year. We are celebrating our 100th anniversary of our post, 223. Back on August 1st, 1920, we had 55 World War I vets that started our American Legion post. And we've had a lot of celebrations we wanted to do this year on kind of the COVID-19. They've all been kind of on hold or canceled. We were going to have a Veterans Day parade, golf cart parade, hauling the veterans from the Legion Hall down to our Veterans Memorial. We had to permit, approved for that. Well, it wasn't signed, I guess, but anyway, we had to permit, and we were also approved by the Health Department. But I made the decision with us being back in red and that I just didn't want to put our elder veterans in any harm's way of having them in a golf cart and things like that. But we are still planning on having a memorial service at 4:00 at the memorial. It'll just be a short, probably 20 minutes or so. We do have to get a speaker. They will be social distancing, and we will have masks approved or available for everybody there, anybody that would like to have one. So we're trying to take care of that. Weather permitting, of course. But the only other thing we have, we were planning a big celebration of our anniversary and our new parking lot that we have. Hopefully, we can move that into the spring, depending on what COVID-19 does and where we're at with the virus and things like that. So we haven't totally ruled that out yet, when to have a barbecue and a dance and all kinds of things like that. So just kind of give you a little heads up that we are planning on some things if we can, if we make them happen. So other than that, we've got a donut sales, just like the fire department's got one coming up on the 7th. Ours is on, I think, the 14th. And we're going to do ours right out of the Legion Hall. They just pull right into the drive. It'll be a, they can go all the way around the building and pull back out on the street so they don't have to worry about traffic and things like that. And they can just come in, pick up the donuts right at the main entrance there of the Legion Hall. And any proceeds from that is going to go into our building fund. We're planning on replacing all the windows in the upstairs of the building. So, and hopefully then that'll give us another place where people can have their meetings and have their celebrations and receptions and things like that. So I know we've only got two or three places in town now that you can rent, and most of the rent is a little bit, you know, on the high side for small groups. So hopefully, this virus will get over here and turn it around where we can start opening things back up for everybody. But I appreciate your time, and if anybody's got any questions on anything, I'd be glad to.
Any questions for Mike?
When was the hours for the pickup for the donuts?
It's the 14th, I believe.
I mean, the time is?
Well, 8:00 in the morning. Eight, till we're sold out, yeah. And we're making the, actually, we're making the donuts in March Center. They do donuts every month, and they sell like 900 dozen. I mean, it's unbelievable what they sell.
March Center?
They're well-known for their donuts.
Third Thursday of every month.
So we're going over there on Friday night, and we're making them ourselves, and so don't guarantee anything, other than have sugar on them.
Mike, thank you for your service, and thank you for yourself. You know, congratulations on your 100-year anniversary.
I appreciate that. Thank you all very much.
Are you doing pre-sale donuts?
Yes, there's a pre-sale, and there'll be a little blip in the paper this week, and it'll have the phone number, and/or you can call the Legion number itself, and you can preorder. They're $5 a dozen, so hopefully, we can sell a bunch of donuts. Windows aren't cheap.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Jerry Hayes from the Defiance County CIC. Well, that, he's on the agenda.
Oh, God.
Okay, I know it's not Jerry, but it's Erica Willitzer.
Yes.
She's going to say a few words. She is the new CIC director, starting January 1st, but you're working right now trying to?
Yes.
Find out what's going on. So I'll give you a few minutes, if you would, tell about yourself.
Well, I'm really excited. I'm familiar with Hicksville. I live just outside of Sherwood on the county line, so I come here, I go to the Mexican restaurant quite frequently, and I will tell you, I just took a tour with the mayor and Michael, and, you know, they were going over the different group that you guys have had, and it just gets me even more excited because I see the great potential that you have here in Hicksville. You're just positioned very well next to Fort Wayne. I have a lot of contacts in Fort Wayne, New Haven, and I think that I can utilize those for your advantage. So I'm excited. The first, so this is going on my third week. I spent, last week, I was at Rotary in Hicksville, and then I'm here twice, so I'm getting to know the folks in Hicksville, and I can't wait to get to know you even more and do some, some great things in partnership with you. So if you guys have any expectations or projects that you want to do, reach out to me. I start again January 2nd, but Jerry is, we're in that phase where he's trying to transfer as much knowledge as possible, which is very hard when you've been there for 21 years. But he's doing as best as he can as far as trying to remember things. I'm picking his brain constantly. So reach out to our, if I had business cards, I'd give those to you, but you can call Jerry's office, and we can get something set up. Another thing, too, that I had talked to the mayor about is, as soon as January hits, and I'm already starting to, we're going to try to start setting up meetings with different business owners, and we're going to try to be very understanding with COVID, so we'll keep that up to them if they want to meet in person, or maybe we set up something virtually. So when I do set up those meetings, I'll let the mayor know, and if any other council, you want to join us, that would be great as well. So thank you, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Any questions for Erica at all?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Darren Brown, Brown and Son Electric. You're up.
Wasn't really scheduled to be here, but this is in regards to the police department's generator that was approved.
Okay.
Got some suggestions, and I guess maybe there's a little bit of information that might have been missing the other day, whatever. I'm not sure what was all approved for the portable generator and transfer switch. On the first page?
Let me read this.
That's what the portable generator and transfer switch was, right around $5,900, plus or minus a little bit. But with that, on the next page, the police department has a lot of electrical issues with the panels and some other things. To get emergency lighting and garage door openers and a bunch of other stuff to operate after the generator started was an additional $4,300 approximately. When you put those two numbers together, you're a little over $10,000. The whole standalone generator with automatic transfer switch is right around $14,000. So for $4,000, you don't have to worry about our first responders, anybody. If a tornado or something happens to hit Hicksville, which doesn't happen, they don't have time to go do a generator, switch things over. Julie's without power at dispatch, you know, so I'm just asking, you know, look at it a little bit more, maybe go, I mean, $4,000 to have an automatic transfer switch and a generator that runs the whole building, to me, is pretty simple. But I know there's issues with money, different things like that, but I'll work with the village any way we can. And if money's not there to do it, hey, we'll build part of it next year. I don't, I'd like to see them have something that is really useful.
Do it right the first time.
Yeah, do it right. You know, the portable generator, I mean, it's better than nothing, but for $4,000, we can have, these guys can be doing their thing in an emergency. You don't have to worry about it.
Hurricanes still include the electrical work?
Well, see, that will be, with, with the automatic transfer switch and the whole, I'm calling it a whole house generator, the whole building generator, everything that's there existing will be powered up, so there won't be any changes. You don't have to have emergency lighting. The garage door openers will work. The phone system, the dispatch, whatever Julie has in there, will automatically come on within a matter of a second and a half. So there's no pulling a generator out, starting it. If it's sat there for a year and a half and never been started, it may not start, you know, right in the middle of the biggest chaos you hopefully never have.
Especially, you know, the gas being in there.
Yeah, I mean, you don't know. And like I said, if it's an issue of money, I mean, put it in part of the budget for next year, I, I'm willing to. And it's, like I said, those are the numbers I came up with pretty quick. That was over a phone, actually, these were done a year ago because that's when I first did it. And the issue right now with the generator, I called my supplier, they're completely out right at the moment due to the hurricanes. Everything they had, they sent south. But, you know, they're making them every day, so if you get it on board, you know, like I said, I'm willing to work with the village any way we can. But I think an automatic transfer switch, whole building generator, I mean, that's what they need.
And that's natural gas?
Natural gas.
That's what we want.
Fish is willing to pay for half of it.
Well, I could probably get some donations today and, you know, get part of the funding we need.
Is that upgrading the wiring in there? Because I had heard it's kind of messed.
Well, Eric went there with me, and Mark was there, but while we're in there, I mean, we've got to be in the electrical panels as we're doing it. So we'll clean up what we can. I mean, we've got to, we've got to take wires out of the panel, out of the meter, put new wires in. There's wires just hanging out of the panels in some of them, you know, I mean, but as we're, as we're doing it, we'll clean up what we can, you know, so.
Does that include wiring in the new heating, air conditioning equipment?
Yeah, Phil and I's working on another job, and hasn't, doesn't affect him one bit. So what you guys have already approved for him is fine, so.
How many boxes are in there? How many?
Well, there's two electrical boxes that are being used that are.
Big junction box.
Yeah, and then there's another one that was an original panel that's just a giant junction box.
How could you ever?
Then all your breakers are in, scattered amongst these two or three boxes?
Well, one box is just, I mean, it's a junction box. Now, it was the original panel, and then a new service was put in 40 years ago, 50 years ago, and then another panel beside it. And just over the years, I don't know who all's been in the building, you know, since Kaduk's left, but, you know, anywhere you go.
Holy bejeweled.
The more hands you have in it, the worse things get, so.
So Cheryl, is there any way we can?
This one here is, you can't even close the door, or that's a breaker panel.
The generator comes with a poly pad.
Nothing's running to the site on any.
But I got a feeling, I went out there the other day, Mark's wasn't there.
That's the breakers, and then this is the other breaker.
May have to pour it down.
The only one they want.
Yeah. I'll include, I mean, it's included in here.
What about the wait time on this generator? Run out to somewhere else.
As soon as, as soon as you guys say okay.
Hanging here, maybe not.
Would there be a back order for this thing?
Why don't them steal things behind?
Right now, some things are available and some things aren't.
I mean, they've been out this long, too.
Yeah, but I mean, we could get it started, you know, whatever. Like I said, I don't know how your paperwork works, the money issue, what can be approved, not approved. But I just think, for what we have, a portable generator in this situation isn't, isn't the best deal.
I agree with you on that. Just do it right the first time.
Cheryl, can we use Karen's money on this at all? Can we bend the rules a little bit on that? Not bend the rules, that's not the.
Can't sing that over there.
Okay. But is that executive session? No.
What was approved for the portable generator and the other?
I have no idea what the price was.
If you remember what that was, the cost.
6,000, wasn't it? For which one do you want to know?
For the generator.
Yeah.
Generator wiring.
$4,300 and $5,900.
I'd say about $10,000.
So you're at $10,200. $4,300, you're at, you have the whole shebang, you don't have to worry about it. These guys are out doing their calls, whatever they need to do.
And you had money budgeted for that, right, Mark, for this year?
Yes.
Well, some money can be used for that for this year.
Fairly appropriate.
Right. So if it's over a little bit, I mean, we're almost at the end of the year, will you be getting it before the end?
If you say okay, I can order it tomorrow.
What would be?
When it shows up, I mean, I'll have to check on availability and.
So what's the council's thoughts?
I'd go with Darren's recommendation. I would further generic standalone.
Okay. Do we have motion for that? Okay. Any other discussion?
Is that something that, let's just say Bob passes away tomorrow and leaves us $4 million, and he wants us to build a new police station, or move it up here and locate it into one of these buildings? Can that be brought up here with us?
Yeah, I would think so.
Why not?
With a, not, how I know anything can be moved, but can it be done with not excessive cost to it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it would be that much. I mean, your basic, your base wiring is in the building. You know, you're adding the transfer switch, wires from the meter.
And you're, you're going to kick the panel with 220 or 110?
It'll be 220.
Okay.
It'll do everything.
Okay.
It also has Wi-Fi compatibility, so they can, whoever can monitor it, you know, if a storm or something comes in there without power, you'll know, it'll, you can set it up for a start time, test run. We usually do them every two weeks. You can do them every week, however you want to do it. So like, you could have it on a test run, notify, whoop, yep, it started up and shut off, so it's a pretty good system.
Where would it be located at, the generator?
Backside of the building, right beside the gas meter.
Are there any requirements you know of to have it fenced in or bolted or anything like that?
No. I mean, really, it's kind of fenced in. There's a fence between.
Yeah, where's that? Sorry, there's a fence around it.
Might throw a little extra money in to fix the door in the hallway so it can go in and out. I'm just trying to help.
Trying to run a play around the building?
But we might have to, but.
Are you feeling all right, Bob? Are you feeling all right?
Yeah, I think so.
I just seeing what we could plan on here.
Well, you just donated the 4,500 right there, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
You been up in the attic about that thing? I can imagine.
Okay, did I hear a motion?
I make a motion to go with the permanent.
A second on that motion.
Is the money there, Cheryl?
If we do it, well, if we, could we do park for next year?
Yeah, that's where I'm at. I'm willing, I mean, if we can do park next year, I'm fine with that. I just want to see.
The park was for next year anyway.
Do park next year or pay you next year, which is only two months away.
You can pay me park next year.
No, because it's not in next year's budget.
We're trying to get it all done.
I think this year's budget either.
But if she can reappropriate leftovers.
But it's Ryan, I don't know what's going on here. I'm just sitting here.
Cheryl, let me answer the question.
Thank God for masks.
What's your thoughts on the budget?
I'll do my best. It's, I think it's doable, and you can let me know. Tomorrow, I'll give you a P.O.
Like you know what?
And I'll get a P.O.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And you can tell me how soon you think it'll be here.
Okay.
We're 127% sure that COVID won't cover none of this?
No.
It was in the Defiance paper, and I was going to come up here and talk to Kent about it, but it seems like it was Defiance that they're using that money for wages. It was in the Defiance paper.
For first responders.
We're going to do that.
For first responders.
I thought we couldn't, and that's why we bought another vehicle.
No.
Wages, police and fire.
They can't underpart your budget, though. Any extra hours or anything they do, then you can cover.
Overtime, bonuses, things like that. So if you got people that's on leave because of COVID, and you got to cover their shifts, that money.
I can see that, but they, the way it was wrote up in the paper, it just sounded like they were going to put on additional people and.
Well, that's how it sounded to me, too.
The sheriff's department's donut.
Yeah.
Not the sheriff's wages.
It was supposed to be, if you want to leave, you got to offer that because of COVID, because they were exposed. Who cares that money would cover the cost of overtime?
Overtime.
Cover your shift.
Put your phone number on there.
But the way I read that article, too, that they were using that money specifically just to pay the officers.
Yep. Take them off payroll and take them and put them on that payroll. Yes.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Boards and Commissions, Park Board met October the 21st. Minutes are in the packet. Any questions on that?
Lot on their minutes for them, but since Darren's here, be able to get that work done?
I've talked to Cory a little bit. I mean, we need to get with Rick and weather. I mean, this is something we're kind of looking to do next summer, well, spring, summer, and whatever.
Supposed to be a nice start in Wednesday.
Yeah. I'll give you my schedule, but, but, I mean, we need to sit down and just go over a little bit and give it to Rick, and because Rick's going to be doing the trenching. You know, I mean, it will be completed 100%? You know, a lot of the weather. So I want to say we do our best, and if it's not completed, you know, the weather committee, as soon as it happens, you know, maybe, so it's April or something, you know, I mean, nothing's going on at the park down there at that time. I know it's billing and money, I don't know how that part works again. I was talking to Cory, something about money having to spend by the end of the year. If for some reason, and I heard some other things that happened, they happened, but if for some reason we don't have the work completed by the end of the year, I mean, can you put the money in an account where the mayor or somebody has to sign it, I sign it, before anything can be withdrawn?
So.
No?
It's in the budget for next year anyway.
Oh, it is? So it doesn't have to be done by the first year?
They just want us to try to have you do it if you can.
Oh.
But it's in next year's budget. All right, well, you could pay.
I got a question, probably some, what is Gaga Ball?
I had to Google that.
It's a big, I don't know what it is.
Like an octagon?
Octagon, and they got like, you get in there.
Oh, okay.
Slap it.
You don't pick it, you smack it around.
It's not a button.
You go see if, whatever, get money for it.
They got them at like the Cub Scout camp and somewhere else.
It's just an idea.
Yeah.
Somebody brought it up.
Interesting.
I do have one question. Cheryl mentioned it's actually in next year's budget. So if we start it this year, for whatever reason, I mean, if we got it done by the first, you know, we could get paid. If it's not done, you know, we get paid on completion, right?
Right.
So, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, if we can get it started this, you know, fall, pretty much, but, yeah, we can get it started and go, except we can't get 100% in place, and we just build when it's completed.
Okay. Four minutes, okay. Next is Committee Reports. I see the Finance Committee met 26th and the 29th.
Yep, yeah, we met on the 26th and the 29th, looked over all the budgets. Cheryl does have appropriations that are, I guess she has all copies of them. I still have some questions on it. We might have to meet again, but just met and changed some stuff around. We met on the 29th with some department heads and tried to actually figure out what they had down on some of their line items because it wasn't specified, so we got some of those answers, and some of them I'm still waiting on to be satisfied, so.
I just want to have the first reading tonight. It can still be changed till you do your final vote.
Okay, any questions? All right. Okay, Ministers' Report.
The big one was going to be the ordinance, but Troy will have that next time around. Just had to go through and update our flood damage ordinance, basically. It's going to be exactly what FEMA wants, so they don't really need to make changes or anything. Otherwise, they did get the lining of the sewer done on West High last week. No one brings things, maybe mid-November, he'll start the open cut part, so we'll find out on that. CSX, according to the latest ODOT update, supposed to be done by late November out on North Main, but they're supposed to be done in September, too. Otherwise, we're still going to leave.
Doesn't say what year, though.
Yeah. Mike tell you what I told him?
Sure.
About Jerry at their CSX. About Derry, at their CSX. He said it's going to be all of next month, at least.
November of 2020?
21.
Is it 21?
Before that's open?
Well, yeah, late November for all of it.
All of it.
Yeah. Well, he, he talked to you last week in October, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said it's going to be every bit of November.
Yeah, well, that's up there. So we need to find out what happened.
And it will be 13-6 when they're done, but that's a true measurement.
I know they're reasoning a little bit. ODOT said they'd come down and measure it when they're done.
He said the best they're, best they're going to get, because they don't want them changing beams, the best they're going to get is 13-6.
So we'll still have the truck detour right with the 12-6 before?
But semis won't fit under 13-6.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions for Kent? Okay, thank you. Troy, your report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2020-16, third reading by caption only, and ordinance granting approval and consent to the director of the Ohio Department of Transportation Authority to apply, maintain, and repair standard longitudinal pavement markings and erect regulatory and warning signs on state highways inside village corporate limits and giving consent of the village for the Ohio Department of Transportation to remove snow and ice and use snow and ice control material on state highways inside the village corporate limits and giving consent of the village for the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform maintenance and/or repair on state highways inside the village corporation.
Okay. Third reading, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Next is the second reading ordinance 2020-17 by caption only. An ordinance adopting chapters 1315 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding placement of house and building numbers. And Cheryl put it on the table, I think, tonight. I took the suggestions that were made at the last meeting plus some that Eric emailed me. It's only a second reading, so if anybody wants more, has questions or whatever, we can tweak some of the language in there, but the primary thing I did is I changed what the fine was and made it significantly less. I don't know, I picked that number. So whatever anybody wants. I added the part about the letters. I basically made it, talked about addresses, but said numerals or letters and put in the standard, the standard letters. And then the other thing I did was added to the paragraph where it talked about sending letters out to people with new construction, also including that if it's determined that somebody doesn't have the appropriate identification numbers, that we'll send them a letter. And then from the point the letter's sent, they got 30 days, just like the new addresses do. So I don't know if that addresses all of the issues. If not, we got one more reading.
Okay.
I had a quick question.
Sure.
Our numbers on the mailbox, and that is their house number, does that, do you still have to have it on the house or does that?
Supposed to be on the house.
I was reading that, but.
Unless it's one of those situations where the house isn't visible and that's covered in there by putting it on a post or something to that effect, but it's supposed to be on the house.
Does Haver Drive have them on the house or they on the mailbox?
Wouldn't have it if you have them on the mailbox.
I think Haver has them on their, on their house.
They're on the, there's some on the houses and some on the mailboxes. A lot of them are on the mailboxes.
But I thought if it's good on the mailbox, then they didn't need it on the house.
Yeah, I mean, and.
Well, we said just legible that.
Right, legible from, so we could add that. I also put, if you caught it in the paragraph in there, to cover that issue about the press box and things like that. I took that and other buildings out there, but I also put that the village administrator or his designate has the right to say it's not necessary because it's not practical to have it on a certain building or whatever. Like, the press box is the best example of that.
Would it be beneficial to have some type of uniformity to, like you're saying with the Havers, Haver Drive part, some are on the house, some are on the mailbox? You know, if an ambulance or a police car is out there at 3:00 in the morning and he's checking mailboxes and then he goes three boxes and there's none and he's trying to find it on the house and you need something uniform? Or just let them find?
Personally, that's probably micromanaging.
I think as long as it's on one of the.
One or the other.
I was just trying to make it.
I never been out there on one of those calls looking for one, so maybe that's better directed to somebody that has been.
You ever done that, chief?
Went for a number?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And it's tough. It doesn't matter whether it's on the house, sometimes it's.
Sometimes you put them on the house and the trees and stuff, they got out.
Yeah.
Kind of block landscaping.
I would say both if you have mailboxes.
I mean, if it's, if it's, if you do it, then do it the right way would be the green reflective signs at the edge of their property that's pretty salty and expensive.
I think people that have actual mailboxes, like at the road, I think the post office requires them to have reflected numbers.
Some of them don't have.
Oh, it's not?
Numbers once.
They have numbers that are visible though on the.
But usually they're on one side of the mailbox.
Right.
You're coming from the opposite direction looking for that.
True, they are. You can't come in the opposite side, that's true.
Right, and it's usually just one side, that's why I say, if it's.
And they're not, because like, I was, we were out there last night and I had to literally walk up to the mailbox just to see the number. It wasn't reflective, you know, it was there, but, you know, I had to literally walk up to it just to see it, so.
Mr. Thor.
I know, I called real quick. I called both hardware stores in town just to see if we, we've been talking about this, it's on TV and the newspapers and stuff, but people do want to go ahead and purchase something here locally, they both carry the reflective numbers and metal or different kinds, the numerical numbers. So if you want to go ahead and get that done ahead of time, you can go after that in town there at both hardware stores, so.
Okay.
Next thing I have is ordinance 2020-18, a second reading by caption only, an ordinance amending section 147.02 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to add two employee holidays. And then a first reading ordinance 2020-19, annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville village for next year, the budget, and I think you heard Cheryl mention earlier, the changes can still be made until the final reading and the votes taken on that. People are still hashing that out. And then the last thing is ordinance 2020-20, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance. If you got questions about that.
Can I have them vote as an emergency?
Yeah.
Because it's the rest of the coronavirus money.
Wow. Make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
The second, third reading by caption only, ordinance 2020-20, ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Any questions? Solicitor? Okay, police chief, Chief Dent.
Well, first of all, thank you for the upgrade to the generator. I appreciate that. Second thing, move patrolman Ross Becker to the next patrol one? Patrolman one. He's completed his year's service. It'll be November 5th, I believe. Third thing is, and I totally forgot about this, but to remove Chris Taylor from probation. He's only maybe two months past due. Take him off the probation status. And then the third thing is for the month of October, we were at 440 calls for service. So. So, any questions?
So I'll entertain a motion.
You have to recommend it.
Okay, I'll recommend Chris Taylor take up probation and Ross.
Separately, too.
Okay. Take Chris off of probation.
I support the mayor's recommendation.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call. Who's the second?
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Okay, and then Ross, what's his first name or is that?
Yeah, Ross.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. One year.
Been here a year and promoting. To the next level of.
Patrolman one, okay. I'll recommend that we promote him to patrolman one.
I make a motion, accept the mayor's recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Any questions for the chief?
Thanks, chief.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, did you hear any, I'm sorry, do you, the Mark system, did you get any farther since the last time we talked with the county or anything?
All right, so they were down two weeks ago. Am I right? Yeah, two weeks ago they were down. And I played them the video and the audio. He felt that it was a repeater issue. So right now, we're not even, trying not to even use the repeaters right now when we're out working. And they were supposed to come back last week to reprogram our portables and make some changes to the repeater system and I haven't heard from them, so. But they're supposed to come back.
Who's they?
Bender Communications out there out of Toledo. I have a 911 board meeting actually tomorrow morning. I've got to find out if they heard anything. But he was supposed to call and let me know. He only had Tuesday and Wednesday open last week to come down and do it, so I don't know if something took place. I know I talked to Matt Hanacraft, he had called him the Friday before that Tuesday and Wednesday, you know, he had gave him my number to call, but I haven't, I haven't heard since then. So, but they were going to try some, one was to change maybe the frequency of the repeater, move the antennas, try to maybe, try to maybe move the antennas farther apart on the cars. But there's some options he's looking at. And then something about bumping up, maybe the radio system to 800 instead of 750. I don't know what all that means, but, so he was doing some research on that. But playing the audio and the, and the stuff of our radio communication, I mean, he says there was definitely a problem, so.
Is Bender the main provider for those, those, for this whole part of the state?
No, they, they, that's, I think that's where the radios may have been purchased through, but Bender Communications has been Defiance County's radio person since I started in Defiance County and they were there prior to me. So they've always been the ones that's worked on all the radios and the communications and things like that. And as Bender told me, since the, the Marx radio system was designed for mobile radios, it was not designed for portable radios. So. And that's probably why the antennas, the towers or the repeaters is needed for the, to operate a portable. Portable transmits back, if it goes through the repeater, it transmits back to the mobile, mobile to communications, you know.
You know, who, who takes care of the patrol radios? Them guys can talk to NASA.
It's the same system. But they also have a.
They have a tower.
Well, they have towers all, but they also have a very expensive repeater system, probably top of the line in their cars. You know.
So if the repeater's not working right and they decide to replace that, whose cost is that, too? Is that part of the 911 levy? Or is that coming out of? Yeah.
Yes, so like the new cars?
Right.
That will be equipped, we're not paying for that. So.
At this point, we shouldn't have to because it doesn't work.
I agree. And it's, you know, tax levy money. They paid for a system that's not working up here for us. You know? So.
Okay.
And it doesn't really work for them that well either, does it?
And I had deputy standing in my office on, just the other day, couldn't get out on his radio. You know? And we hear their radio traffic, too, when they're, when it's up on the west end. They have issues. You know, they're on portable and, but like I said, and I'm going by what I'm being told, you know, that portable radio wasn't designed for a Mark system, it was the mobile radios that were designed for Marks. That's why you probably got to have the repeater or a close tower or something that it can hit off of, so.
Okay.
As long as something, we'll do something tomorrow.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the chief?
Thanks, chief.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Fire EMS, I don't see anybody here. Park director, nobody's here. Cheryl, you're up, your report.
You have, of course, the fund status report, the utility and income tax collections for October and the income taxes. Kim's very disappointed that came as a negative. And we have a media com franchise fee report also. Any questions?
Any questions for Cheryl? Okay. My report, Ron Hard is retiring from the zoning board of appeals. I think he was on the park board, too, right, for a while?
Yeah.
So he wanted to be retired from that. So we thank him for his years of service. I'm going to recommend Mike Henley take his place. So I'll recommend him if I can.
I'll support the mayor's recommendation.
Second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth? Beverly?
No.
Okay. Defiance County was moved to red, which is not good. Thirty-eight of the 88 counties are in red right now. See if I can see that, yeah. So what level three means, very high exposure and spread, limit activities as much as possible, follow all current health orders. So the next level will be four, so we hope we don't get there. Seventy-eight percent of Ohioans now living in the red, because it's a lot of your bigger cities, so 78% of the citizens. So, you know the, what they want you to do, wash your hands, wear masks, stay apart. And tomorrow is voting day, thank goodness, and it's at the Empower Church at Hicksville, out at 9228 Hicksville Edgerton Road, and voting is 6:30 in the morning till 7:30 at night. So if you haven't voted, I encourage you to go vote. So is there anything else needs to be brought before this council? I'll entertain a motion.